To six thirty. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, beginning with a determination of a quorum. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have six present and one absent, so we do have a quorum.
All right, next, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I'll entertain a motion, if there is an addendum, but it is on this agenda. There's the addendum of the resolution to decide the grievances is added to that. So with that addendum, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, our recognition and awards, I don't see any, if I'm not mistaken in that, Amra? Okay. And then next, in our agenda, is community comment time. This is a time for any members of the community to step forward and address the board with any concerns or thoughts they have for the good of the school district. Not seeing anyone, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Next up is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are approved by one motion unless a board member requests a separate action. It is not a debatable motion, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, or are there any items that a board member would request to have looked at separately? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
I will vote aye. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jason Ingraham?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, six in favor, zero against.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda, item number six, curriculum, a technology update, Colleen Carnuto is gonna give us that update.
Good evening. We actually had our curriculum meeting today at three thirty. There were several things on our agenda to discuss. We discussed the overall summer steam program. We talked about when the program was starting and pretty much kind of a quick overview of the program. I understand that Marie is going to share a little bit more information about that when she comes up here, so I'll let her continue with that. Another discussion that we had was on our MMR results. We talked about that because we are really looking at the world's best workforce, which is from MDE. It is a plan that we have to submit in October. And so we wanted to kind of take a look at our results because we have to build that plan by setting goals around our MMR and a variety of other areas. And then we talked about our timelines for hires, for our hires. This is in association with the levy that has passed. And basically, what I want to share with you is the idea that when it is time to hire such, you know, such as our staff back or our specialist or ELL coordinator, what the principals are gonna do are they're gonna come through the curriculum committee and they're going to share the reasons for the hire back, the reasons their needs, and kind of bring it through the curriculum committee and then bring it through the board, just to remind everybody of our levy and what we said we would do with hiring back our staff. Other than that, I want to give you a technology update. We've been working really hard on technology. In November and in January, we had a, our staff training day. And during that time, we offered technology training. We offered six sessions in the first round and second, and two, another six sessions in the second round. And our staff got to choose the two sessions that they were going to attend for the day. And just to kind of let you kind of give a quick overview, we did things like web two point oh, Office three sixty-five. We did iPads in the classroom. We did a variety of offerings such as that, and our staff chose two. So we have started the training of our technology. The other thing that I want to update you with is our technology plan. We have been working on technology plan in the next board work session, or the board work session in March. We're gonna go through and kind of talk about how we got our mission, our vision, and our strategies, and ask for the board's input on our overall plan. And so that's kind of where we're headed with technology. And that's all I have for tonight, are there any questions?
Any questions in the board?
Which of those sessions were the most popular that the teachers attended on technology?
The iPad in the classroom were definitely the most popular. We're staff, we had many of our staff members actually doing the presentations. For anyone that has, that we have given technology to, they wrote a technology plan, and since they wrote the plan and they got technology, they needed to, and we trained them, they needed to give back to us, so they were actually the trainers. So I think of Corey Little, for example, or Mark Reeves and Lindsay. They both were doing iPads in the classroom, and both of those courses were filled. We did have to cap them, however. We had to cap them at thirty because that was the amount of computers that we had, and about the right size to be teaching a class. We would have had many more people in a variety of our classes. It was just that we did have to cap them. But very popular. And we did a survey to ask our staff what they thought of our training. And I have to be honest, it was just, it was amazing. They were very satisfied, they were very satisfied, so we had a happy staff with the trainings that we did.
And you have another one of these scheduled, then, did you say?
Well, our plan, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. Our plan is to hopefully run technology, a couple of technology sessions over the summer. And so we're hoping for, we're hoping to get that out to our staff relatively soon. More, many more opportunities for our staff to continue to be trained with technology and innovation in the classroom.
Any other questions from the board? If not, thank you, Colleen. Next up, item seven, policy. There was no policy committee this past month, the meeting was canceled. We have a number of policies in front of us for second reading. For those who might be watching this on tape, when the board considers new policies or revising policies, they first come to the board as a first reading. And then at the following meeting, they can come up for a second reading, at which time the board can take action and they can be implemented. So these policies that are in front of us tonight are here for second reading, which means that we have seen them before. They are, policy six oh one, school district curriculum and instruction goals. Policy six oh three, curriculum development. Policy six twelve point one, development of parental involvement policies for Title I programs. And policy six thirteen, graduation requirements. And finally, policy six sixteen, school district system accountability. I would be happy to entertain a motion to approve each of these policies with one motion, all of these policies with one motion? I move. Is there a second?
Second. I don't know. We'll split it up any way you like.
We have a motion and a second for the, to approve the policies as I previously listed. Any discussion on any of these policies at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I'd like to ask, are these pretty much standard wording from the MSBA? Or are those, are these, any of these ones that we've written up by ourselves? Or where does the wording come from for these?
These are mostly boilerplate policy from MSBA. And then when the MSBA policy, or the policy committee goes through those, they'll tweak it to make it adjust to what our situation is with it.
The graduation requirements?
Yep, that's an example.
What we thought would be a good test for our students.
So can you explain that a little bit on the graduation requirements? What did you add?
Yeah, and you can look at it too. We basically, again, paralleled what the new MSBA policy and how that reflects the new law. The statute's changed that the MCA test is no longer required, the high stakes test, as a graduation requirement for students. We can still use it, but we don't have to, we can use other testing results. For example, we can use the AccuPlacer. If we have kids that have a real difficult time speaking language, and it's difficult sometimes for them to comprehend the information from the test, but they're still passing all their classes, we can give them the AccuPlacer and determine some of the remedial areas that they need to go to in order to get into college. Or maybe they're already ready to go into, I don't want to say college, any sort of a post-secondary institution for that. So a lot of the, it gives us an option to give some alternative tests to students, which I believe are a little more helpful to determine what the kids' needs and the family needs are for them to be successful in a post-secondary career.
So how would you describe, does it make it easier or tougher on our kids to get a diploma now?
I would say it makes it more useful, some of the testing that we have, because the data that we gather as a result of them taking some of these tests will give the families and the students an idea of what they have to accomplish in order to get into. I'm using South Central College as an example, it's a good example because it's ours. But they use the AccuPlacer as one of the criteria for the students to get in. So the students know if they have to take a remedial math course before they get into school or before they can even be accepted out of college. And it kind of gives us a pathway for some of these students, which is something that we're working on directly with South Central College.
So is their time enough before graduation that if they're, if they're, if they find that they don't have the skills they need or that they can still pick it up before spring?
Yeah, and we're quite honestly looking at a larger picture of this. We'd like to start some of those career explorations in the middle school rather than wait until the high school for these students to take some of these career courses. And then we can determine some of those pathways for them at an earlier stage and work with, I mean, work with South Central College directly for some of these requirements that these kids will have to take if they decide to go in these certain skills. So it's a good option for us.
At least they'll take the test, Howard, and they're given remediation as well to try again. So if it's, they're given opportunities to improve.
So it's more, basically, it sounds like it's a little more user-friendly to students that might be struggling to help them get a degree?
Yes, they've completed their credits, you know, they complete all their class credits in addition. And so it helps them graduate right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just echo that because it's an important question. The curriculum committee, Tom and I, well, also looked at this change before it got to the policy committee. And I would say that really the primary and almost sole reasoning behind the changes, as allowed by state law, were to give the students opportunities to take tests that were more useful to them than the MCA. The ability to get a test that told them something about what their preparation was for college, where to place them in classes as they moved on beyond high school. So that was the primary motivation. I think the changes to how easy or hard it is to actually accomplish a degree are almost negligible. Yeah, only a few students would be affected by it on the order of less than five, I'm sure.
It's more about the help that's available to us?
Absolutely.
I'd like to take a moment to thank the administration and the policy committee regarding policy six oh one, which we'd had as a first reading earlier. And I expressed some concern over wording as we looked at some of the different goals that we're working at, and I see that that has been addressed. So I thank you for taking my concern into consideration.
To clarify, six oh one, that is school district curriculum and instruction goals. That's what Tom is referring to. Any other questions or comments from the school board? All right, hearing none, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. In light of passing a new policy six thirteen, we need to rescind the old policy six thirteen. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to rescind policy six thirteen, graduation requirements, which were adopted three fifteen, two thousand and ten.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rescind the old policy six thirteen for graduation requirements. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. Next up, on the agenda, item number eight, finance. Is there a finance committee report, Mr. Treasurer? Did you realize?
No, I didn't realize, I didn't want to give a report. It was my first meeting, I thought it was very.
Yes.
Richard, why don't you add? He likes discussing. I think the biggest discussion that we're gonna have is regarding the addition of staff.
Right.
They need that, it's item number four C here. Terry, Renee's asking for help. Pretty much it, right, Terry?
Jefferson as well.
Oh, is it, oh, Jefferson.
Someone Roosevelt and Jefferson.
Okay, so, and other than that, that's.
We discussed the policies, I guess, regarding the fund balance. We had a discussion regarding that, and I think the consensus of the committee was to keep the policy the same.
Right.
Continue forward with that.
Keep the nine and a half percent and not change it.
Okay.
And we reviewed the budget, which is always in very good order, from what I could see.
All right, excellent.
And our next meeting is February eighteenth, on Tuesday, right after President's Day. You can't meet on that day.
Excellent, okay, thank you very much. Next, our items reviewed by the finance committee and recommended for board approval. As just mentioned before, this is the staff additions at Roosevelt and Jefferson. Is anybody going to address the board on this? Superintendent Sessom, would you like to?
For the staff adjustments?
Yep.
We have, actually, if Terry wants to come up and talk a little bit about that too, the finance committee reviewed it as well, and I think there was a summary in there, but Terry, you want to?
Brad Palmer was unable to attend any of the concerts for his son, so he didn't email me a. Specific questions I might be able to address slightly, even though I've had a conversation as well. Hopefully, if there are specific questions about Jefferson, then I give you some insight. Because the two models of the add back request are slightly different according to the needs within each building. But I think the Dallas Monster probably wouldn't be in the ballpark for the Boston. Would you like an overview, would you like, you have that request, I think you've had the request before. I don't know if you need an overview or just would like to ask any specific questions you have about our request.
It'd be good to refresh you said what it's about again.
Okay, so at Roosevelt, in a meeting with the staff, putting a request after superintendent offered us the possibility of looking at some add back at this time, we discussed it. And if you remember, at Roosevelt, the cuts, the classroom cuts were third and fifth grade, so we have three sections of third, three sections of the fifth. Currently, our third grade only has seventy-six kids in it. So when we, when I met with the third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers and asked, you know, what do we need? Third grader was quick to say, hey, we're all right. Send a fifth grade group. We're all right, with the numbers that were out, they didn't feel that they needed that add back at this time. But fifth grade, by far, we're right currently as of tomorrow, because a new student will be added tomorrow. Only we're at a hundred kids in our fifth grade, which is thirty-three, thirty-three, and thirty-four in our classes. So we're asking for a half-time certified teacher, roughly nine-thirty to one-thirty, you know, in there, to support core instruction and tier-two instruction. So that means that it's not gonna, we're not gonna start a new classroom, whole room, okay? Because that would be too disruptive to the kids. So we're gonna have, and come in and work with our kids in core, core reading, core math, small group and intervention reading, our support math time, as well as some writing time. We will reduce class size during those periods of time. So it's like, there'll be a fourth teacher for those core instruction areas. So that's the teacher request of part-time. And then the next meet after fifth grade was kindergarten. The high numbers that we have in kindergarten, some of the needs there. After meeting with that team, they feel that their support within the core curriculum area and that tier-two interventions are sufficient. They have eight individuals that come, the four classroom teachers plus four support people, so lower class sizes for those intervention times. So they felt that they could, would use some benefit with some additional parent professional support. Parent professional support throughout the years has been kind of continuously reduced as we've had to make those tough decisions financially in this district. And because we've had, I think, four hours of parent support at kindergarten level in the past, we're at two hours now. So I have two parent panels that share their time, take two classrooms each for two hours. We're asking for two four-hour parent professionals in kindergarten classes. So that we, each classroom will have four full hours of parent professional support. So that's Roosevelt. Now, Jefferson, if I can find it again to make sure I'm accurate, the request there is for a full-time teacher to address intervention. We did hire the interventionist, and what we can keep this clear, we did hire interventionists at all three buildings, posted for them, interviewed for them. And that was the other, that was special education money, right? Federal funds to support interventions. And Michelle Pine started my building last Wednesday, wonderful addition. To do that tier-three, the most intensive service to kids that need it, that aren't getting it from the core, aren't getting it from the second boost, the tier-two, need that tier-three. So that's, we all three have that. Jefferson took that person and put them K-one, two. So their request is three, four, five, to have an additional interventionist to work three, four, five for the rest of this year. So that's Jefferson's request, full-time certified teacher to do intervention third, fourth, and fifth. I hope I spoke to you today.
Yep, you did.
So, any additional questions?
So, Mr. Renee, what happens? Do they take those students out of the classroom or do they work with them in the classroom?
If I speak to each case, the teacher, the teacher that I'm asking for at Roosevelt will be included, will kind of have their own class. They'll be within that fifth grade pod as like the fourth classroom for that, for those core instruction areas.
But physically, physically?
Physically, they'll have a class, in fifth grade, we have that fourth classroom, so they'll be in that, that fourth classroom, doing service in there as well as in the pod area. So it will, they'll kind of, the teacher will create a group, they'll take their thirty-four kids in their class, and each teacher will give, you know, eight kids or ten kids, you know, to go to them for that core area. So that's what that is. The interventionist thing would be, for tier-three is usually a pull-out, small groups of one to three to four. And that usually would be more, more like a pull-out type of a service when we're talking tier-three intervention. They need that real intensive service, and that's better to be done at a smaller group.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve staff additions at Roosevelt and Jefferson. So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I guess I would just like to thank the teachers, Kenny, and this is right, if I'm saying correctly, for coming tonight and giving us information also about the additions there myself.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item eight C, the budget. You have an enrollment report in front of you, which shows the enrollment holding fairly steady, going down slightly as it often does at this time of year, but holding mostly steady. And a financial report showing comparative where we are this year compared to last year. Any questions for Colleen?
Do we have the February, since we're in the February, do we have the February numbers?
I just got them today, so I was looking at this and I thought, oh, I thought we went up, but that's for February. We actually went up about eight kids, I think, so that's good news. But I do want to comment on one of the things, if there aren't any other questions. I know that you probably have, are familiar with the high school food service. And the kids, there was a group of kids that wanted to stage a boycott in January, which would have been Noah's first week on the job. So Lyle, the principal there, was able to talk with the kids and say, you know what? Let's just give him a chance to get started. How about if we meet? So we offered to meet with the kids. So myself and Noah, the new food service director, Noah Busman, and Kathy Meade, who's a food service manager at the high school, and Lyle met with a representative group of juniors and seniors. We asked them to choose a student out of each homeroom, a junior and a senior. So I think there are about twenty-five or thirty kids there. And we really, the intent of the meeting was just to listen to the kids' concerns, which we did. And every child got a chance to speak. Lyle made sure that we started at one end and went all the way through. So everyone got to make a comment about what their concerns were with food service, and some of the good things and some of the not-so-good things. So that was a great meeting, the kids had a lot of great ideas. One thing that really, I think, helped, it helped Noah to come on board and know what some of the concerns were. And the good thing is that he immediately instituted two changes. One of the concerns was that some of the sandwiches were pre-wrapped, pre-made and pre-wrapped. And so they tend to get a little soggy sitting there, and so then he, they went back to the old method where you get to choose your bread and choose your meat and choose your cheese and choose your vegetables to put on the sandwich, so it's just a little pressure. And then the other thing was that they were flash-cooking all the vegetables right away at the first lunch hour, and then they would sit till the third lunch hour, and they get a little soggy and mushy. So they're now cooking those at each lunch period. So just a couple of things that he did that I think improved it. And we're certainly going to move forward now with a more in-depth, well, it's not real in-depth, but at least we're gonna survey all the kids at the high school for some feedback. And we're also asking the kids to volunteer to serve on a committee that would meet with Noah and Kathy and myself periodically to talk about not only what they would like to see changed, but also to educate them about what we can and can't do, because obviously we have some parameters we have to work within too. So that will be good moving forward. And I think Noah's done a great job his first few weeks on the job, so I just wanted to update you on that too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I've had several contacts from the community, and I think that shows that we are addressing the issues.
Absolutely, and the kids are very respectful and very helpful, so it's good to hear.
What, when we go back and survey the kids again, do you have a plan at a point at which that's gonna happen?
Noah has sent me the questions, so I just need to review them now, and then we'll, it should happen within the next couple of weeks. We're trying to decide whether we want to do a Survey Monkey, which would be electronic, which might be more difficult to get the largest number of kids to do it. I think I'm gonna suggest that they go through the homeroom process, because then every student will have a, it'll be paper and pencil, but at least every student then has an opportunity to voice their concern.
What about at the other schools?
The high school really has been the one that I think the changes were the most difficult for them because they maybe aren't used to eating those kinds of things. And we probably instituted changes there that we don't necessarily have at the other buildings. We have found pretty great success with the elementary and the middle school, with the kids embracing the new changes with the new policies regarding fruits and vegetables. And of course, our high school kids are just a little bit hungrier than the other levels, and so a lot of the concerns are with the amount of food they were getting. It just felt like it wasn't enough, but we do have a calorie restriction, which makes it difficult. But one thing I did point out to them is that you can get two lunches, you just have to pay for the second lunch.
Did you relax the federal guidelines?
They relaxed some of the calorie restrictions, but we were already at that. It was a temporary relaxation of the calorie restrictions last year, so we were already at that level. But now that's been made permanent.
Any more questions for Colleen? Thank you for addressing that, actually, for the board's information, I was gonna mention this later, but since the topic is at hand now. On Tuesday last week, I met with a representative of Sodexo, and they wanted to chat with me about the, and I mentioned this earlier, they wanted to chat just about the feelings of the school district, you know. And so they chatted with a number of people throughout the district about the food service. It was not somebody who was local, it was somebody Sodexo brought in from, actually, she based, is based out of Massachusetts. So she flew in to talk with us about how we feel about the food service, and I mentioned these exact items and mentioned some of the same things that it's nice to hear are starting to happen. So that's fantastic to hear. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is to consider approval, wait, where am I? Item eight C three, consider approval of gifts and donations. We have two this evening. The first is from the Faribault Booster Club in the amount of seventy, seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. It's a donation for the legacy mural at the Faribault High School Student Center. And then the second one is fair or transportation, a bus transportation expense for the middle school music trip to the Sterling House, and for the high school student council shopping trip for Toys for Tots. As always, we thank any group who steps forward, any group or individual who steps forward. to make a donation to our school district, because I think we've already mentioned this at the school board, but it's worth mentioning again if we have not. The legacy mural at the high school is really phenomenal. I was just there this weekend for a basketball tournament that my daughter was at and had two or three people come up to me and point out where their picture was on that wall from years ago. They were excited about it and I think it was just a real focal point now of that building. So very exciting and many thanks to the Booster Club for that, that project is a wonderful addition to our schools. So we thank all those who donate to the Faribault School District and at this time I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of these gifts.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, eight D, consider approval of concurrent enrollment agreement for 2013-2014 to the South Central College. Bring down this script, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's just an agreement so that our students can get college credit while they are, while they are taking classes within our own school building. It's an agreement that we have with South Central College, so it's pretty basic.
Is this a new agreement or a continued, something we've done before?
Yep, okay.
Any further questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve concurrent enrollment agreement for 2013-2014 with South Central College. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, item eight, school board hiring process for fiscal year 2014-2015.
I sent you, I, we just actually finished up the last touches today. I sent you one to Erin in your email, so you have it. It's a hiring process of kind of timelines what we have set or we've established to give you an idea of when we're going to hire some of these folks. And I'm just going to go over those with you. And like I said, there's an email coming to you so you can read through it more thoroughly. But the idea is that we try to time these so that we get the ideal candidates that are out there. And also, we want to make sure we stay within our levy dollar amount and our guidelines for that. There are a lot of different variables that are involved, so we're going to go through this timeline, but I'm going to use the caveat that we need to be flexible with it too, depending on the candidates and how they're out there and the application timelines for these applicants. So the dates are this for the primary ones that we feel we need to get going on. The technicians, we are looking at hiring by March first. And I'm going to tell you the process here in just a second. The media specialists, integration specialists, we're going to advertise in February and hire by March fifteenth, hopefully. The summer STEAM program, we've actually started that process and we're going to be looking for staff. And the normal way we do that is we look for internal staff first to help with these programs that we offer in the summer. And then we go outside for that. The English Language Learner Coordinator, we'd like to get on board by March fifteenth. So we're going to start looking at that process here pretty quick. The high school counselor and the middle school counselor, we'd like to hire by April fifteenth. The elementary teachers, we'd like to have a hire by May first. There are some leaves coming back, so we have to make sure before we send that information out that there will be openings in the elementary. So there are some variables that are out there with that. The specialists, the music art and orchestra, we'd like to hire by April first. And then the core teachers for middle school and the high school, we'd like to hire by May first. And those are the ones that we have definite down here. Now, the process that I've asked our principals to do when they start this hiring back of the staff, and again, we want to make sure we keep the integrity of the levy of what we promised the voters intact too. At the same time, when we do some of these planning stages, we also want to keep track of the enrollment dip and what's being offered for classes. Certainly, if you don't have students in a classroom, it doesn't make much sense to have a teacher for that classroom. So we're going to do the common sense piece too, but we want, we want to keep the integrity of the levy what we promised the voters in place. So what I've asked the principals to do is to start with the curriculum committee and then give a short description of what the new add-back is. Nicole has job descriptions for each of these, so that will be also attached to that piece. The timeframe, when the hire will go, get some discussion at the curriculum committee for this particular hire. And then also get a dollar amount for what we estimate the hire is going to be, so the curriculum committee can take a look at that. And then go through the finance committee, do the same process so they can see it as well. And then after it's gone through curriculum and it's gone through the finance and final approval at the board for each of these hires. So that's the process that we have in place and that's why the timelines were necessary. So these are the timelines, when you go back and look at these things, you can kind of think of a month prior to that, that's when all the action starts. So for example, we want to get going with the media specialist and the integration slash integration specialist pretty soon. So at the March curriculum committee meeting, they're going to hear from the principals the justification for having a media specialist slash integration specialist, okay? With the job description attached. So that's the process. So are there any questions about that?
So this is going to go through curriculum and finance?
Yes.
Okay. And is this going to be like a spreadsheet type kind of format?
I just put it in a Word document right now. And then as that change, if we do get some, if we get another couple of days of snow or cold weather and we throw the, no, don't say that. There may be some issues that happen in the future that prevent us from following the timeline, but we've got it backed up far enough or I think, well, I know we're in a pretty comfortable spot. I will say that we have started, or we're going to start, advertising for the middle school principal. Is it, when? Today, we threw that out there too. So we post, we did post the middle school principal position as well, so you have that for now. Okay? Howard?
I'm not familiar with what kind of training our administrators have for the hiring process, but do we offer any kind of skill development for interviewing skills and hiring determining who the best candidate is?
Well, in a sense, we, well, we have Nicole as our in-house expert and she's got a master's in HR, so she has some good knowledge and background on that process. I think the experience, like Lyle was just talking about, I think he's been in forty, fifty different interviews, so we've got some experience behind that as well. But there are some parameters we have to follow and we rely, we go pretty heavily to make sure that we follow those parameters. So as far as the training goes, it's mainly in-house and then we go through that process of depending on the candidate too, the type of interview that we go through.
So how many people are usually involved in selecting when we hire somebody? How many, how many people actually would be involved in making that decision?
Yeah, and it depends on where the hire is too. Normally for these positions, there'll probably be six or seven people in the room with the hire. It'd be the principal, of course, and probably Nicole in most of these hires and then some staff that have an interest and possibly a support staff person in there as well.
So there's, there's support from veteran administrators in hiring.
Yeah, yeah. The piece that I always put out there too, with, and the principals do this as well, is that the, the committee that's doing the interviewing is helping the administration make the decisions for this position that's being filled. The administrator always has the ultimate decision on whether or not to hire. Obviously, if you get the process where you've got six or seven people in the room and this, then it's a pretty easy thing. But sometimes you get down to one or two candidates, especially some of the teaching positions that may be opening up, there might, it might be pretty competitive. Then it's, I, in my estimation, they've got to, the principals consult with Nicole and then they make the final decision if it's down to two.
If we, if we ever get to a situation where we only get one or two candidates for a position, do we ever go out and recruit?
We will call colleges and we will look at different people that are out there. If, if a principal happens, a Noah person who asks us qualifications, then I'll ask him to call them and ask them to apply. We can ask them to apply and get them at the table for the interview, but in every single case, the candidate who is interviewing for the position has to sell themselves to the panel and then the panel ultimately makes a decision for them.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all, we'll move on then. Other committee reports. Insurance committee, no report this evening. Wellness committee, no report this evening. Community DA, Anne Marie, will bring us a report.
Good evening, and I'll wrap in the wellness into the community ed report because we do have the health fair February twentieth and twenty-first for the Faribault Middle School students. And that, would you like to say anything about that?
Well, scheduled February twentieth, twenty-first, every middle school student will have an opportunity to participate during their FIAE class. And the wellness fair is going to focus on stress reduction for middle school students. And the stops kids will be involved from the high school doing some kids as well. And the stops kids will do some stops and stops will be involved in the programs and will have some community exhibitors sharing tools for stress reduction. And Angie's been very helpful, I should say, the middle school vice principal. She gave us a list of kids input and what stresses them out today and it was quite, I guess what you'd think, but it was a long one, they're stressed out, so I think it's going to be great.
Or any of the things that stress them out, the fact that we have the name stops and one stops?
That's the firm member that's stressed out about that.
Thank you about that one, it's great. In terms of other community education, good news sorts of things, Colleen already brought up, summer STEAM, we'll be looking at enrolling about three hundred and fifty students this year. So we had about a hundred and twenty last year, so it's quite a difference in enrollment. It'll start June sixteenth and go through July thirty-first with the week of July fourth off. There will be teachers in the morning, like we did last year, really focused on intensive core academics and math and reading. And in the afternoon is the enrichment part. And they all come together and just have, you know, fun, but still based in the STEAM themes. And Colleen and her colleagues came up with some really cool themes this year. So we've got dig in it, get shocked, medieval madness, planes, trains, ships and automobiles, reaching for the stars and the amazing race. So I know it sounds like something that I want to participate in too. So there'll be a great program again this year. We'll be getting information out early February. We're much more ahead of schedule this year and look for that coming soon. In terms of shifting gears a little bit to our CAS program, our College Ambition Starts Today program, which is funded part by Integrated District and part by Community Education, it's a great partnership. We have students that, that really we focus on first generation at risk, low-income students. And we have lots of them signed up. Carlton stepped up and is offering to pay for ACT prep classes for about twenty of the students. So I think that's a, again, a nice partnership that we have with Carlton College, so we thank them very much for doing that. And again, shifting a little bit, McKinley, our Early Learning Center, we have now twenty-four preschoolers covered through the Early Learning Pathway One scholarships to attend full tuition, all paid for, no cost. So twenty-four, it's terrific. Other communities didn't use up their funding, so we actually got a little bit more coming our way and we can use every penny. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. I would just note, we were just discussing STEAM and we kept talking about doubling that number, but as I do my math, the hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty is more like tripling the number. That's, that's incredible growth in one year and so we thank you for taking that big effort. It should be exciting. All right, next, other matters. Other matters, item A, approve the 2014-2015 Faribault Public Schools calendar. Todd, would you like to walk us through how this calendar came about?
Well, you know what, I'm going to, I'll start it for about two seconds and if you have questions, I'll probably ask Colleen Cardenudo to come up here because as the Director of Teaching and Learning, she is actually in charge of managing that calendar and she did all the work, quite honestly, I can't take any credit for it, so.
I didn't say I did all the work. Basically, we built a calendar, a write-a calendary. So we build four different options, I have the strongly of Kathy as we look at the past. And we built four different calendars as we look at the number of days that our students need to have, the number of days our staff needs to have, where vacations fall, we're just looking at a variety of things, making sure that our quarters and semesters are kind of equal. And then we take those four different options and I bring it to a committee. I have Paul Johnson, Terry Schultz and Bonnie Becker. I want to make sure the last name, I know Bonnie's first name, but not last. And so I brought that, I brought the calendars to them. They took a look at them and read it, helped us read it down to at least two calendars and then they send it out to their staff and the staff votes and brings it back and says, this is what, this is what we would like to see. And to be honest with you, it was pretty unanimous this year, our calendar A was truly our best option. One other caveat about the calendar is that we really tried very hard to make sure that we have that Friday graduation situation under control because I understand it's really relevant and very important to the community. And so sometimes that makes us extend or add additional days off to make sure that we hit the graduation that we like to hit every year. And so that's how the calendar is typically built.
Any questions for Colleen on this calendar?
How many early dismissals? I count six.
We, the same, the exact same that we've had in the, in the past.
The past?
Yeah.
You don't see phasing those out at all?
You know, well, from a curriculum perspective, I would hope not. But you know, we really are working really hard, if you kind of followed our staff development and training over the years, in our elementaries, we're working on PLCs and technology and RTI. And in the middle school and high school, we're, we're working on our PLCs, technology and Avid. So we really use that time to do trainings and to come back and to, to look at the things that we need to do for our students to keep moving forward.
Could you somehow do that before school or after school so we can increase the teacher-student face-to-face?
And you would, there would be a financial factor that would go with that, I, I'm sure. So that there is that issue and, you know, with coaching and other things that come into play, I, you know, it just works out much better to do a lot, to do our early releases. Most districts, very common to do the same thing that we are currently doing. It really is a benefit to students. We look at our data in many, many occasions to see what we can do to continuously improve. So it's really a way for us to continue to improve the school district. And we had some great conversations, by the way, in the curriculum about all the things that we have put in place based upon our MMR results and the changes that we've made. So we are looking at continuously improving the district and we'll use those days to do it.
Any other questions for Colleen? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2014-2015 Faribault Public Schools calendar.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a comment, she's being a little bit modest. Thank you, Colleen, for all the work. It does, it's a lot and to try to coordinate everybody to do the same thing is, it's a really, really difficult task. The calendar is probably one of the more frustrating tasks that she has on the plate, so thank you, Colleen, please.
This may be kind of a naive question, but we have semesters and trimesters and quarters.
Yeah.
How does that work? I mean, what is it, what, what do we have, really?
Trimesters in the elementary and quarters in the, in the middle school and high school and semesters and quarters kind of go together hand in hand.
So are there two quarters in a semester then?
Yeah, yeah.
So the kids switch classes partway through?
Well, some, not all. It depends enough to have a quarter class or not.
Yeah.
Then they switch, yes.
We offer quarter classes.
Yeah. What makes it more difficult in, with trimesters and quarters and semesters is the parent-teacher conferences because they're all over the board for parent-teacher conferences.
So some of them have it and others don't?
They have it, but they're at different times. So you may have the parent of a elementary, if they have a elementary, middle and a high school student, they've got three different nights that they go to parent-teacher conferences sometimes. So that's always a challenge.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2014-2015 Faribault Public Schools calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
No.
Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
I will vote yes. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
And Jason Amberg?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, there would be five in favor and one against.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item, approve region facilities use agreement. Next item, approve region facilities use agreement. Superintendent Sescar, would you like to walk us through that?
Yeah, I have Ken here, he's an expert at hand on this one, but basically, I believe it, while you explain it, Ken, I'll let you talk.
This is an agreement with Region 1AA, all schools have to do this now, that will allow us to host region events when we have that opportunity, when we're a high seed, for instance. It's just an agreement to allow us to do that. It has to do with, with payment of workers, basically. That's the part that's kind of changing. In the past, when we would host, for instance, say, a region basketball game, I would submit a list of workers and what they would be paid to the region, and the region would cut checks individually for each one of them. The region will now only cut one check. And so we will pay those workers the way we do during the normal year, and then we will be reimbursed by the region for them. So lots of tax changes this year that have changed some of the things that we do, so it's just, it's just an agreement that says that, you know, we will take care of it.
So is the rate the same for all the schools?
Pardon?
Is the rate the same for all the schools in the region that they pay?
No, because basically, the region does have a standard rate, however, if you normally pay more in your district, then they will, they will cover that amount.
Any more questions for you? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the regional facilities use agreement.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the region facilities use agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Next is the approve the pay equity implementation report. I'm guessing this is a Nicole item.
It is. And this is a standard pay equity report. If you have specific questions for Nicole, you certainly may fire away, but she can kind of, you want to just explain what this is all about?
Sure, absolutely. Okay, so if you look at the report that you have, there are four main parts to the report. The first area is just the general information that we input in, tells you how many jobs we have, how many of them are primarily female, and how many are primarily male. Moving on to the second area, that's the statistical analysis test, and that, what that does is the report draws basically an imaginary line, a diagonal line, saying, starting with the lowest paid individual to the highest paid individual. And with that line, based on our jobs and our points that are assigned to the jobs and the salaries that are assigned to those points in those people, in those positions, the report kind of plunks people in at or above this predicted imaginary line. So if you look at those numbers, using, using AA, the number at or above predicted pay for the male classes, eight, and then the number below predicted pay is also eight, so the total male classes that we have is sixteen. So we have eight percent above that imaginary line and eight, excuse me, eight positions above that imaginary line and eight positions below that imaginary line, so that makes all males equal. They're fifty percent above, fifty percent below, so they equal each other out, so they're, they're okay. Moving on to the females, we have twenty-one positions that are at or above the predicted pay line, and we have twenty-four that are at or below the predicted pay line. So they're a little bit uneven, they're fifty-three, they're at the fifty-three percentage. So basically, we add those two numbers together, and the state says if you add those together, as long as your number is above eighty percent, you pass. So it's a very big complicated process that they've put it through, but in this situation, our, our ratio is ninety-three point seven five, so we passed that test. We balanced each other out with males versus females. In the second area, the salary range test, this area tests our positions to look at the average number of years it takes for a female to get to their top salary versus a male to get to the top salary. And again, in this test, you have to score eighty or more, and we've scored thirty-two point three. So what that says is, letter A says that the average number of years it takes for a male to get to their top salary is two and a half years. The average number that takes for our females to get to their top salary is seven point seven four years. So we're out of, we're, we're inequal in that particular area. We let our males get to the top salaries much faster than we let our females get to their top salaries.
Why?
This is primarily information or things that have been negotiated into bargaining contracts. So most of our contracts have what we would call a salary scale or a step in lane matrix that are built into it. So using a paraprofessional, for example, they take four years of employment for them to get to their top salary. Comparing them to a male class, which would be a custodian, they come in and they start right away at their highest salary. They don't have steps to go through to get to their top salary. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So moving on to the last area that they test, again, we have to score eighty or better. This is called the exceptional service pay test. And what that really is, is longevity. So in our case, we have forty-three point seven five percent of our males eligible for and receiving longevity pay. We have forty-two point two two females eligible for and receiving longevity pay. So those are pretty balanced, so that, in that particular area, we've passed as well. So now this data is, has been submitted to the State Department, it was due January thirty-first. They now will analyze the data and look at it in more detail, and then they'll send us our results.
All right. Then what does this mean for the district?
So what happens is that if they find us in compliance with their pay equity law, we then get to file it away and look at it again in three years. If they find us out of compliance with pay equity law, what we have to do is, we're given so many days from the State Department to fix the errors and re-submit our data. If we fail to have it fixed within so many days, whichever the amount of time that they give us, they then withhold state money from us.
What do you anticipate in the report from them?
I anticipate we are going to have to address the issue with our males getting to their top pay much quicker than our females. I anticipate that, but I don't, I don't know that for certain until we get all of our results back.
So we're not talking teachers here, we're talking, we're talking our other staff?
Well, teachers are included in all this data that we input. They are a pretty balanced class, though, as far as the state is concerned. We have, we have a pretty comparable amount of male teachers as we do female teachers, but primarily those groups of employees that are mostly all females versus mostly all males. So they do get included in all the data, but for the most part, they, their group isn't sending us out of compliance.
So just to make sure we're clear, our male teachers don't rise to the top faster than our female teachers do?
That's correct. They do not.
But you mentioned janitors versus parents?
Yes.
Custodians. Is that the typical class, classes we're talking about here, or are there others?
It would be most, it would be most of our non-certified staff, so our paraprofessionals, secretaries, educational assistants, ASL interpreters, custodians. I think that's about it.
So do we have males getting to the, getting there faster in other work areas besides our custodians?
I don't think so. I think it's mostly just the custodians.
And do you have any explanation about why the custodians get there faster than other groups? Why is it such a short period of time?
That I can't tell you. I'm not certain. When, when, when they negotiated their contract many, many years ago, they either didn't start with steps or somewhere along the line, the steps were taken out, and they haven't been taken out of any other contracts, just the custodians for whatever reason.
So our custodians, within two and a half years, generally are at the top level?
They start at the top the day they're hired.
But, and then any salary increases they get thereafter come when we make a settlement with them, a negotiated settlement with them for what their increase would be for that two-year period?
That's correct.
Is that unusual?
I'm only familiar with our data, I'm not sure if other districts handle it.
That's fair. Thank you.
So if timing works out, we, our first hope is that we can handle this through negotiations, because all of these groups are open in the next few months. So that would be the best case scenario.
All right, any other questions for Nicole? This is an item we need to take action on, we're required by state statute to send this up to the state, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the pay equity implementation report.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Suck.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the pay equity implementation report. Any further discussion?
I just, again, want to thank Nicole. This is a document that is, again, painstakingly long and takes a lot of time from her, and she's done a very accurate and thorough job with this whole process, but it is a very, very difficult form to go through, so we appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next two items are item ten D, discussion of future curriculum, and item ten E, board retreat discussion. I'm not sure if those are really connected or not, but.
They are sort of connected, yeah.
I thought they were a little bit connected, so I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Sescar and Marcus Steen.
With the future, and we're going to be talking soon about our vision, mission, and goals that, with, at the board session, I thought this would be a good opportunity for you to think of some items that you'd like to discuss at the board retreat. We're going to talk about scheduling a board retreat here next. And mainly, we want to focus on curriculum and what we can do to enhance our curriculum in the future. And there's some good ideas that are out there that people have talked about, but I wanted to know if the board had any ideas of things that we would like to take a look at. For example, I know that Mr. Robo Show has always talked about having a Spanish or a second language immersion program of some sort, that we could talk a little bit about the board at the board retreat. But is there anything else that's on your mind with regard to curriculum?
Well, I'm always curious about what poverty is like in our school system, how it affects our students and our teaching in our schools.
I know this is going to be coming up in, in the curriculum committee and other things, but if we're looking at a board retreat, I think it'd be a good time for us to at least visit the idea of technology integration.
What else? Gloria Olson had an article in the paper about the difference in experience for boys versus girls. And I also noticed that we had a survey done where it said more girls wanted to go to college than boys, but then when you read it a little closer, basically, the only difference was some of the boys didn't want to go to college, they wanted to go to some kind of technical training. And that said, it makes me wonder how much, how much offering do we have to help those students that don't want to go to college that want to go on and learn a trade? And I don't know if that can be addressed adequately at a retreat, but it is a subject that I think, boys and girls both, but after reading Gloria's article along with it, it does make you kind of wonder, do we offer enough to keep boys engaged in school that are not going to college?
Yeah, and we can even take that a step further. I know that the diversity piece is how are, are we doing things purposefully to include not only boys and girls, but also our diverse population involved in some of those curricular areas? So I think that's another component that we can tie into the, the whole gender and the, the idea of boys. You always, the, the other piece of it is the research, do we have more boys than girls taking the sciences and math curriculum? I think that'd be good data for you guys to take a look at. And if there is a difference, should we come up with a plan of where we can be purposeful about making those numbers increase, things like that that we can take a look at? So I think those are good topics. And I would, I would include the diverse population as well.
Yeah, towards that end, Todd and I have talked a few times in passing about diversity in all of our extracurricular activities within the schools and where we're succeeding and where we're not really succeeding in bringing the diversity of our school district into the diversity of those extracurriculars. And I think that'd be an important thing for us to discuss and ways we might focus more on that.
Well, the one other component that we talked about at curriculum, and I know what the, the elementary principals and other staff have brought up, this is coming from the staff now perspective, is maybe looking or rethinking our elementary component. And I know we talked at one time, it's been brought up before, of having three different elementary levels, but I don't know if we're ready for that big of a jump or not. But maybe doing a, just an example, a K three, K three, and a four or five school. And we've been doing a lot of things around STEM and STEAM and the thought of some research about maybe doing a four or five STEAM school. The disadvantage, of course, is that you lose some of those neighborhood schools. The advantage is both economically and professionally, is you get all those teachers together in one building. You know, that one former teacher who works for another district now has that situation where she has all of her teachers in the same exact building. And the comments I've gotten from this person is, it's been a great asset for her to be able to collaborate with her peers and, and work with her fellow teachers. So there are a lot of advantages economically of doing that, too. You only have one grade level, you can look to see what your ratios are, and there's not such a discrepancy between school buildings with some of your teacher to student ratios. So something to think about, but I don't know if you're interested in, in writing that down or not. That came from the staff, but I wanted to throw it to the board first, and you can give me a yea or a nay on that one, or a thumbs up or a thumbs down on that one to talk about.
Certainly things worth talking about.
I mean, it's just talking about it, it's not doing any action.
I think there's also some emphasis on the tests that we're looking at, that you can start early with those tests. Not Tom that you want to hear that, but if those higher grades are in one building, that would have just as bad parents of those tests starting at an earlier grade.
I'd like to bring up an issue that I've been involved with over the years, and that is, we, we've adopted the State Department Best Workforce, I think, am I saying that correctly?
World's Best Workforce.
Yes. And, and I'm not disagreeing with the intent of that, but I was involved with Rotary Club and the Strive Project for a number of years, and we did some research there, and I've continued it on my own, about post-secondary readiness, you know, beyond just work readiness or even college readiness, but post-secondary life readiness, such as based on one statistic that was, was brought up repeatedly, and I believe still to be accurate, is that there's a, quite a high number of students that go on to college but don't finish. And some of the reasons that they don't finish are, can and should be addressed by our curricular concerns, but there are other non-curricular factors involved, such as money management and that sort of thing, so. And it's been an area of interest of mine and, and maybe worthy of some, at And it's been an area of interest of mine and, and maybe worthy of some at least board attention in terms of what is it that students need to be able to do to do the best that we can to ensure their success after they leave our K-12, or pre-K-12 program?
What are our expectations, folks? Good topics.
I ask what weekend we'll have the retreat.
It may be a month, that's our work.
I think we can whittle that down to some of the highlights and then bring the others up, too, as we, as we go through work sessions throughout the year, too.
Sure.
Okay, anything else regarding either of those two? Do we want to try and set a board retreat date at this time, or?
Well, I thought, since we had you all together, it might be easier to try to find a date now than, than trying to, to send out an email. Is there a better date?
Las Vegas.
Oh, yeah. I think we should have somewhere in the district.
I've always heard that the district office is in Las Vegas, at Farlow, so we'll use that.
You're making clean, I'm a little nervous. Well, we have, February is here already, and it would sure be nice to review some of those goals and I think that you've already established a very good mission statement, vision, and those goals that you've been developing over the last couple of years, so those are pretty solid, and it's a matter of doing some tweaking, and we're getting some suggestions from the staff about those goals already. So, I would see the talk that we just had about curriculum as our priority, and then we'll look at our goals, see if they match with what you're having in discussion on curriculum. So I, I think that you need probably two hours for this. Maybe two and a half.
Do you want to try another Monday night? It's when we typically are making it easiest for those of us on the board to...
We already have meetings, the other two Monday nights available, the seventeenth.
Yep, we have a work session on the tenth and a board meeting on the twenty-fourth, and the president's day is the seventeen.
Okay, so that's not available. Should we try for a Saturday?
Are we trying to stay away from Wednesdays?
Wednesdays are coming, too. I was just throwing it out of my head, so. Should we try a Wednesday in a couple of weeks, the nineteenth perhaps? Just throwing a date out there, so. You're out the last two weeks of February. You went for the twelfth, does that, does that give you guys enough time to even prepare for a meeting though, Tom?
Yeah, that's definitely.
You think the twelfth, it's coming up quick here, the twelfth? Wednesday, February twelfth? I think you would be here for that, that date, is that correct?
I can do it anytime between four and six or later, or whatever works out for everybody. I'm pretty, I'm as flexible, probably most flexible.
What works for others to start? Five-thirty is then a typical start time for evening meetings, does that work well?
I can be there for part of it, so.
Is earlier or later better for you?
I, you could start at five-thirty, and I would leave early and probably come back. I have a class at each, on Wednesday evening, so, and I'm comfortable with that, if that works for everybody on a Wednesday evening. The earliest I'd be able to come is five.
Is five?
So we do like a five-thirty and then, then get up and dinner?
Is there a strong preference for five versus five-thirty? I don't think it makes a difference to me.
Five-thirty is fine.
Five-thirty is fine. It'll be five-thirty on Wednesday, February twelfth.
Do we know whether Jerry, Jerry Robichaux's got an invitation?
We don't, we don't know.
They plan at the district office?
Yeah.
So it'll be basically those two agenda items that are on there, the curriculum component and the mission, vision, and goals.
And you'll send out an email, of course?
We'll send an email reminder, and then we'll get the board agenda out.
Is there any advantage to setting an alternative date on March, first week of March or something?
Sure. You think, you're thinking we're going to get a snow day?
Well...
With Jerry?
And that Wednesday, the fifth, works for me, too. As an alternate date?
We don't have a work session on the third. Wednesday, the fifth, is Ash Wednesday, I don't know that might...
Oh, yeah, it's going to be bad.
What about the third?
Third, we have curriculum, but...
Certainly do it after that, it's time.
Yeah, that'll work. On the third, Monday, the third.
If it actually works better for me in the next one, what do you say, so?
Is this okay with the timeline for you, to do March third?
This is, is this the alternate date?
I don't know, I'm just asking, you should make this the date or the alternate date, that's kind of what I'm asking, from your perspective, Tom. This getting into March, less preferable than trying to give you some direction earlier?
I think sooner the better, quite honestly, I think that's the only thing.
Let's keep it with the February date, and this is being an alternate.
Could this go over to that March, like, another retreat?
If we needed to, we could do that.
That's a good idea.
I hate to be limited to the key terms.
That's a good idea. And then five-thirty again, is that okay? Got it? Thanks, you.
All right. Anything else on these two items, Tom?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, we're good there?
Yep.
Okay, we will then move on to item 10F, Approve Resolution 1401 Deciding Grievances. I sent emails out to the board, a little over, we could go anticipating that we were going to have a meeting last Monday night, when that was canceled, we moved it to this Monday. Let me pull up my emails here, because I want to refresh my memory as I try to review this for everyone. So, I forget the dates now, on the November twenty-third, Tom and I met with...
January.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
Why did I, I said November twenty-third in my email, that was, that was a mistake, obviously. January twenty-third, Tom and I met with members of the administration, including Todd and Nicole, as well as representatives of the paraprofessionals union to discuss a grievance that had come to the board level, and there are two of them, and they regard different items, so they are not not related, except for that they both happen to be within the, they both relate to a paraprofessional in our district, otherwise, they're not related to each other. I'll try to give you a brief summary of this in discussion, some items to note as we get started, some do's and don'ts. As I go through this, I, I want to try and not identify any of the employees involved in a public meeting. So we're going to avoid doing that, and so I'll try not to be too vague about what's going on, but we want to be respectful of that rule of the road, but I'll try to give you the details of, of the situation and why Tom and I made the recommendation that we did, and then we can discuss that at the board and make a decision whether or not we would like to approve our suggested recommendations for how to handle these grievances. So, I'll start with the first one, this one is probably the more complex of the two, I'll try to make it as simple as I can. This involves, at some level, two paraprofessionals. Both applied for a particular job within the district, and there is no, according to contract rules and such, there's no disagreement that one of those paraprofessionals was a higher priority for the, according to seniority and other rules involved in the contract for the position, and then another paraprofessional was, would have been the second person, second choice perhaps, for that, for that position. And so the grievance is brought to us by the person who would have been second in that, in that hierarchy there. And the discussion really comes down to whether or not the person who, who was given the job was eligible to apply for the position in the first place, and so that's really what it comes down to. There's no, there's no debate about who was entitled to the job through, through seniority and other rules, but there is a debate about whether or not the person who got the job was entitled to apply for it, and it relates around an article in the, in the contract that reads as follows, and I'll read that to you, "An employee may successfully apply for a new or vacant position under this article only one time in a school year." Unless the employee, some other things there, but this, this particular provision seems to suggest that an employee can only apply for a new or vacant position one time in the school year. The reason for this, this being in the contract, to our, to our understanding, is that we would like to refrain from employees moving around the district too often, such that it would become something that would be not good for students, not good for employees, if employees were moving around. But we certainly want our employees within the district to apply for jobs, other jobs that come open in the district, if they feel they, sometimes they provide better hours, sometimes they provide better pay. Whatever the reasons may be for that person, if they would prefer that, that new position, we would like to be able to apply for them on this limited basis. But it's limited to one time in a school year. The person who got this job was in a particular, somewhat unique position. They had been laid off in the district from a previous job, this is through no fault of their own, they're a special ed paraprofessional, and many times positions come and go, as students come and go from the district, they're often associated with it. So, the laying off was in no way intended to, was, was through no fault of the employee, and in no way reflects the value of this employee to the district. And at that time, then, the employee applied for an open position within the district. There was a position that was open, and they applied for it, and they achieved that position. They then, a little while after starting that position, another position came open, they applied for that position, that's the one in question, and they were appointed into that position. So, they did in fact apply for two open positions in the same school year because of this. The administration's take on this was that because the first time they applied, they were really in a position that they needed to, because they had been laid off from the district, again, through no fault of their own, that they would prefer not to count that as their one opportunity to apply for an open position. And thus, they decided to hire the person who was at the top of the list for this position. So, I guess, as I, Tom and I discussed and came up with our reasoning for, for the recommendation that we made to you, our recommendation would be to deny the grievance and leave the hiring in place as it is. The union is requesting that the person who was second in line for that position be given that position immediately, and to receive some back pay for the difference in the pay between the two positions in the, for the time that they have not been allowed to be in that position. Our reasoning really involves two things. It struck us that it is somewhat unfair for our employees when they're placed in a position of being laid off, that to apply for a position in that situation puts them at a disadvantage to other employees in the district who didn't happen to find themselves in a position of being laid off. So we felt like there was something inherently unfair in, in requiring a strict interpretation of that clause and putting employees who have been laid off through no fault of their own in that, that sort of position. The other thing is that there's some, if, if you're going to interpret that strictly, there's some things that seem just very awkward and strange. That, that employee could have, instead of applying for an open position, the person who, who got this job, instead of applying for an open position previously, they could have chosen to bump somebody else. They had seniority in the district, so that they could have chosen to bump somebody else out of a position, position within the district and set off a chain of bumping throughout the district, and, and they would have been within their rights according to contract to do so. If they had done that, if they had bumped somebody instead of applying for an open position, then this clause would not apply. Then they could, by this clause, have applied for this, this open position when it came up, because they would not have previously applied for an open position, they would have applied, or they would have bumped somebody else out of, out of a position. And this seems to us to be sort of not make any sense. It seems to create an incentive when a, an employee's in this position of being laid off, that instead of applying for an open position, they would rather bump somebody in the district, it would save their right to apply for other positions in the district. And that seemed to be something that was somewhat nonsensical to us, and we didn't want to interpret the contract in that fashion. So for our sake and the interest of fairness to all of our employees, we thought the interpretation that, that leaves out those employees who are in a position of being laid off within the district for that, that counting that as, as their one chance to apply for other positions in the district, we seem to believe that that was the most fair to all of the paraprofessionals within the district. So there's a lot of moving parts there, and I went through it quickly. I hope that that made sense. I would add, and I think this is really important, that none of this decision had anything to do with the value of either of these two employees to the district. None of this discussion centered around which, which employee was a better employee, which one could have done the job. There was never a discussion that centered around that, that someone was incapable of doing these positions. We're simply trying to find out a way to interpret the contract in a way that's the most clear and the most fair to all of our employees. And it is not meant to be a statement about our feelings about either of the employees involved in this case. So that is, that is the information on that one. Are there any questions about that grievance before I go into the other one? Yes?
Of this position, is there qualifications? Are both qualified for this?
Both were qualified for this position in this case. Both had, both had the qualification, there were qualifications, and they both met those qualifications for this position. One had priority because they were in a, the, the contract gives priority to someone who's in a similar position within the same building. One person had that, and the other person did not, but both met the qualifications for the, for the position. Nicole will correct me on any of this if I make a mistake, so.
If, if we approve this, will this go further into legal challenges?
I don't know.
Because that's going to cost
Absolutely.
Attorney's fees.
To be honest, I'm not sure either way if we can avoid that, because I think if we were to approve this grievance, we could have a problem with the other employee.
Other side.
Could easily have a, a concern about this, too. So I, I'm not sure that we're, there's an easy choice there. I don't know that answer, though. Richard, I think it's a good question, but I don't know the answer.
Part of the reason you don't know the answer is you can't predict what they'll do.
Right, exactly. What they'll choose to do with this, I, I don't know.
Does Tom have anything to add, since he was nothing?
I agree with what, how Jason reported the situation. I saw it the same way. We had a somewhat lengthy discussion following the meetings, and are in complete agreement about the way, both situations.
Sorry, go ahead.
Could we, you know, I think their contract is due, are these paraprofessionals?
Yes.
You know, could we clarify in the contract coming up?
That's, yeah.
You know, so something like this doesn't happen?
Yep, that's our intent.
That's been discussed.
Oh, okay.
To extent, yeah.
Okay. Are these voted separately or together?
I, I think there's one resolution, so we can't do them together, although we could, you know, if the board is not wanting to approve it in that fashion, we can do them separately, so. That, that's still up to the board to decide how to handle them. If there aren't any further questions on this, I think the way we'll proceed is I'll talk about the second grievance then, and then we'll decide if we want to act on them together. Is that appropriate at this time? Okay. So the, the second grievance, it still involves paraprofessionals, but the situation is quite different. This is a situation, there is a term, and this term is a technical term, I don't want to use it to, there's a definition of, of meaning highly qualified for this position, and that, in the, the posting for this position, that definition of highly qualified, which I believe comes from the state, that definition, is that?
It does come from the state.
It comes from the state, and it involves a number of ways that someone can achieve this designation of highly qualified. It can be an exam, or a number of college credits, or a variety of ways that this can be achieved, but there is this designation called highly qualified, and for a position in question, no internal candidate applied for the position who met the criteria that, that is highly qualified. Instead, an external candidate applied for the position who did meet those, that, that designation, and that external candidate was given the position. The internal candidate then filed the grievance, and that's what's in front of us. The internal candidate's argument... The internal candidate's argument and the union's argument is that in the past practice, the district has in the past hired individuals for a position that they advertised as wanting somebody who is highly qualified. They have hired somebody who did not meet that criteria and given them six months to achieve that criteria. In this past case, the administration pointed out that the significant difference was in the past case, that no one applied for that position who met the criteria of highly qualified and therefore we were in a position of, of either hiring somebody who did not meet that criteria or not hiring anyone at all. And in that case, they chose to submit, hire somebody who did not meet the criteria and give them six months to meet the criteria for, for highly qualified. In this case, there was in fact somebody who applied for the position, an external candidate, who met the criteria and, and the district decided to hire that person instead of the, instead of the internal candidate. The argument of the union was that the internal candidate should have been given the opportunity to achieve that qualification within a six-month timeline the way an external candidate was in a previous hire. They believe that set a precedent and we should give the internal candidate priority and give them this timeline to achieve this, this, this designation of, of highly qualified. So Tom and I decided that we should deny this grievance and I think our reasoning was as follows. There's nothing in the contract that, that would give us clarification on, on which of these two candidates should have been hired. There's nothing that says the internal candidate should have been given that kind of preference and there's nothing that says we needed to hire somebody who was external. And so in this case, Tom and I decided that our recommendation really revolves around the fact that we believe this was really an administration call to decide which of those two candidates they would choose to hire, whether or not they wanted to go with an external candidate. We didn't believe that the prior case established a precedent that we needed, that was so strong we needed to follow. A case in which no one with that, that qualification applied, did not seem to set a precedent that in the next scenario where someone did, that we should automatically go with an internal candidate. And so, and so we decided that this, this falls under the, the purview of, of what our administration is hired to do, make decisions about who to hire for positions. And they did so in this case. There's nothing in the contract that would suggest that they did so inappropriately. Again, I think my last two notes, again, none of this had anything to do with the merits of the candidates involved. There was no discussion of that. This term highly qualified is not meant to indicate that the person who didn't meet that qualification is not qualified. This is a valuable employee within our district and nobody is suggesting that they are not qualified for, for this or other positions. They simply did not meet the, the laid out criteria for, for what that means in this So there's, there's no judgment here on, on the two individuals involved in this, in this grievance. And, and again, I also think Tom and I didn't feel like we needed to state whether or not we believed that this was the right hire or not, that, that they should have hired either the external candidate or the internal candidate. We simply felt that this was definitely an administration decision. That they, the, we hire administrators to make choices like who to hire and in this case, when they have that flexibility, we believe they should have that. And we did not, we decided not to pass any judgment on whether or not that was the correct decision, only that they, it was their decision to make and I believe that that's appropriate. So that's my, again, as brief as I can make it summary of this situation. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can about that. Yes, Richard?
The external candidate was more qualified?
I guess the way I want to phrase it in a very technical way, there's this designation called highly qualified and it, and it, there's a number of ways that you can ma, meet that criteria. That external candidate did meet those criteria, the internal candidate did not.
Then you mentioned that they opened it up and no internal candidates applied?
No internal candidates with that designation applied. If I, if I said no internal candidates applied, I misspoke. No internal candidates with the highly qualified status applied.
Okay.
If I said anything else, I misspoke. Thank you for clarifying.
Did that include certification?
I'm not sure what that question, what you mean.
Well, did the highly qualified mean that the one had a certification and the other had, hadn't completed a certification yet?
Yes, I think that's right.
It's, it's not quite like that, but it's, it's, the term highly qualified is, is.
It's not a certification, I guess.
It's not really certification, it's just that you've reached a status that qualifies you. A few years ago, the state, actually the federal government said that in order for pairs to work with Title I students, they had to be highly qualified, otherwise you'd lose your Title I. And they were doing the same thing, but now it's, it's just a report. If you, if you have this highly qualified status and you're working with Title I and now special education students, you have to have this highly qualified status, which means you, you pass a pair protest or you pass, you have an AA degree or higher. In fact, I think it's even a one-year, I don't know how many credits they have to have, Nicole, for the sixty-six, so sixty-six hours in, in a college course to be highly qualified. So you have to have that criteria in order to work with these students theoretically.
So the person that we hired did have extra time, education or whatever, had paid the dues so to speak.
Had, yes, they had their highly qualified status.
Was, would have it been possible for the other one to get, have gotten that? Probably can't determine that.
Well, it's been in effect for six years now.
But physically, in six months' time, could have they gotten it?
There's no reason to think they could not have, I guess. There's an examination they could have taken to, to do so.
Yeah, it's offered I think every four times a year.
Any other questions about this item?
Are both people still employed by the district?
All people involved in both grievances are all employed by the district.
They're all, they're still employed. Nobody went unemployed here.
Nope. Looking for the passing resolution. There we go. So there is a, a prototype resolution deciding these grievances based upon the recommendation that Tom and I made, should the board choose to accept that recommendation. This is written to decide both of those grievances at the same time, but it certainly does not preclude the board from taking different actions should it, should it choose to do so.
These are different, reading they're.
They're two different grievances, but we can decide them together.
If we split them, would that be a different resolution number?
I think we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to talk about that if we were going to split them.
You'd have to add, yep, you'd have to put the next number on the resolution if you wanted to.
I would like to, because they're different, I like to split them. I don't know what's, they are different.
Well, let's entertain a motion. How about we do it that way?
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution fourteen oh one deciding the grievances?
I don't understand what you're asking here. Is that?
Well, so, so there's, there's a resolution in front of us and so somebody can make a motion to accept this resolution or somebody can make a different motion if they so choose. But, but I can take either motion.
I'd like to make a motion to split these, fourteen oh one and fourteen oh two.
All right. I don't see any, I think the changes in wording would be minimal, but we'd have to find some way to designate the two grievances in the, in the wording of the resolution. I'm not sure at the moment how to do that without, without using names, which we don't want to use at the moment. Is there any sort of designation number about these two grievances that we could put in there?
You know, is it possible we could discuss them as item one and item two and see whether we really differ on opinion of them? If we don't differ on opinion, there's no reason to split them. But maybe we could discuss it a little bit as item one and item two?
Well, we have a motion on the table, so we have to address the motion on the table before we go further. And to clarify, we, we have a motion to act on two grievances as separate resolutions. So we could have a second to that motion and then talk about whether or not that's the option we want to pursue, I think. Is there a second to that motion?
I'd like to, the reason I, I'll be voting for this, so it's not like yes and no.
Well, okay, hang on. We don't want to discuss the motion until there's a motion to discuss. Right now we have a motion. Is there, is there a second to that motion?
A second to?
So that we can discuss.
Discuss, yeah.
Sure, sure. Okay, so now we have a motion and a second, so we can discuss a motion to approach these two resolutions as fourteen oh one, fourteen oh two deciding on the two different grievances. So now we can discuss whether or not we want to, I think the motion at this moment is not to decide the grievances, but to choose, let's clarify this with, with me, Richard, so that, describing this right. The motion at this moment is not to decide the grievances, but to split the resolution into two grievances and then act on those independently. That's the motion. Okay?
Just, can I, Mr. Chair, can I?
Please.
The reason why the, the resolution was set up this way is to just take into an account that when the decision has been made, we would go ahead with the letters to the employees of the decision for the board. So my question would be for the board then, if there is a question that the board has of denying or not denying one of the grievances, I think that would be the question here. It's not whether or not the, the two individuals are different, it's whether or not the, the school board representatives are going to deny one or not deny one. So if you, if you split it up.
I, I agree Superintendent Sester, but that's not the motion on the table.
Okay.
At this moment. And so now that we have a motion on the table, I, I would suggest at this moment to act on this motion, I would say, I, I would prefer it, just to put my two cents on there, that at this moment we voted against this motion, which is not to decide on any grievances, but to split these, then have a discussion about how we feel about the two grievances and make a decision about whether or not we want to act on them as one. I'm not opposed to it, but if we are in agreement about the two of them and have a sense that that's how we're going to go, I would prefer to act on them as one. But that's the motion is to whether or not we split them. And, and I agree, I, I would like to have a sense of whether or not we, we are in agreement on, on the two of them before we decide whether or not we're going to split them. So at the moment, I would prefer to not split them, but that is the motion on the table. So we have that motion. We do need to act on that before we move on to other business. Any further discussion on that motion on the table at this moment?
The only reason I suggested that because to me, they're different and maybe legally it's one motion or, that's all, that's all. Just two different cases. That's it.
I mean, honestly, I don't have really strong feelings on this except for, I'm not sure how to phrase the grievances if we split it into two motions and so I'd prefer that we leave it as one. All right. Any further discussion on the motion on the table, which is the moment is to split the resolution into two? It's not to decide on any grievances. And there's no reason we couldn't act on them separately if we voted against or for this, this motion. All right. Hearing no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call on the motion?
Please repeat the motion.
So the motion is to split resolution fourteen oh one into two different resolutions to act on the two grievances separately. It is not, to clarify, it is not to decide on either of the grievances at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Call for the vote. I will vote nay. Tom Casper?
Nay.
Deb Davis?
Nay.
Yvette Martholler?
Nay.
Richard Olson?
Nay.
And Jason England?
Nay.
Mr. Chairman, it's six, six against, none in favor.
All right. Thank you all for, I'm sorry to be technical about that, but I just want to make sure we, I, I, yeah, I would suggest we have some discussion on these two and see if, if, if there's any sense that we do want to act on them separately or, or if there's some agreement on these two. Are there further discussions on, on these?
Do we have to make a motion?
You have a resolution in front of you, so you don't. You're talking about the resolution.
Yeah.
Well, I, I support the work that you and Tom did on the grievances and would support your conclusions on both of them, so I wouldn't see the need to separate them.
Yeah, I don't see the need to separate unless someone's going to not deny the grievance.
Does anybody have questions that might mean that? I, I guess one thing I would prefer, I would like, like to put any board member in the position of is having to vote on both of them. So is there anybody who feels uncomfortable at this moment, feeling like they would vote differently on either of the two grievances? And if so, maybe let's discuss how, why you might feel that way and then, that would be the reason why I would want to split them up. I don't want anybody to feel like they, they might want to vote yay on one and no on the other. And if you feel that way, let's discuss what your questions are and then if that was a reason for splitting them up, then I would, then I would be happy to do that. If people are feeling the same way about both of them, then I think significantly easier to use the resolution in front of us to look at them both at the same time. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution fourteen oh one deciding grievances.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution fourteen oh one deciding grievances. Any further discussion on these grievances? Any questions on the two?
I, I'm not, I'm not just rubber stamping this. After hearing the case to this extent anyway, I think it makes sense for what your recommendation is in both cases, taking each one in my mind separately and thinking about it, I would have done the same thing.
Any further questions, comments?
I'd just like to say that perhaps in the future, to avoid any possible unnecessary tension, that we do approach any grievance decisions individually. I don't know if that, how that makes things more complicated, if it, if it's the privacy issue, that sort of thing, I'm, I'm not, okay, well then, we need to respect that. All right.
Right, any further questions or comments? We've never had two grievances at the same time in my time on the board. Let's hope it doesn't happen again. Certainly would be good if it did not. All right, hearing none, as this is a resolution, I believe it just needs a roll call. So Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes. I. And Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
And Jason England?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, be six in favor, zero against.
All right, thank you very much all. And, and the very last word I want to say on this is to reiterate the thing I said a couple of times in, in discussing each of these individual items. Nothing about the decisions was come too easily and nothing about decisions is meant to reflect on any of the personnel involved. We didn't have any indication that anybody involved was anything less than a, a, a great employee of the district whose work we, we are thankful for. So the decisions on these grievances are not meant to reflect any, any comments on those, those individuals. Thank you all for, for that. Okay. Next on the agenda, other items of information. No student representative is present this evening. Any items of information from school board members? I'll mention that I attended the MSBA meeting. I think Howard was there as well, as, as well as Mr. Olson. And it feels like forever ago now, at least in Ice Age anyway. And it's, it was, it's excellent meeting. I felt like I, I got a, a, a large amount of, of good information, particularly some interesting items of information about some recommendations that are coming out for the legislature to consider in terms of funding, funding the upkeep of buildings within a district was a large part of discussions of.
within a district was a large part of discussions of a working group that included Kevin Hildebrandt and others throughout the district, throughout the state, and ways in which we can ensure that buildings that are built throughout the state can be kept up, and ways to finance that. And I mention that now because as we've had some discussions very briefly about safety and other types of things that we think about with our buildings, these recommendations are specifically meant to address that. Nobody expects them to come up in this next legislative session, but perhaps in the one after that. So these are things I expect us to hear more about, and I would strongly suggest that we talk to our legislators about those as those come forward. I forget his name, the head of Melcher, is that it?
Tom Melcher.
Tom Melcher.
Head of Finance.
Head of Finance for the state. Made some comments that I think we've all heard here. Many districts have the same issues we have with safety, in which they have buildings that were built before. People were worrying about these sorts of things, and now to redo those buildings is a very expensive process. We're not talking hundreds or thousands of dollars, but much, much more, many more zeros than that. And this is a challenge, and his statement was that, you know, all students deserve a safe school environment, and making sure that we have ways to fund that is important. Currently in place, we do not, within the state, have ways to make sure that that happens. And so, that's part of the recommendations, and I look forward to hearing more, talking with you all more about those. The other thing I mentioned just in brief, again, last Tuesday, I talked with SEDEXO, a representative from SEDEXO, shared with them some of the concerns about the high school, and what you heard from Colleen earlier. I shared with them the stories about sort of last year, and the concerns about pork products in our schools, and the misconception that we were somehow banning pork from our schools. Pork is on the menu. My daughters have it on the menu. I've looked and seen it there. It's not banned from our schools at all. Just some concerns about that, and making sure that when we make changes, and that we communicate those things really well to the community, because it's important for everyone to understand where changes are coming from. And I think in that case, some miscommunication made something a bigger issue than it needed to be in our community. And so, I talked with him about that as well. So I wanted to share that with all of you. Any other items, that's all I have, any other items of information from the school board?
Hearing none, Mr. Superintendent.
I'm sure most of you are tired of hearing, this is Superintendent Todd Sessler, we are going two hours later closing school.
My kids are not.
Your kids are probably fired up, but the parents are not so happy with you. It's been a very cold couple of weeks, and again, all these decisions that we make with regard to having school late or closing school, the number one question that we ask ourselves is what's safe for kids. And that's how we determine those decisions for our school district. I was also at the MSBA conference. I did see Yvette was there too at the last day. So at the tables in the morning, and also the, I thought the presenter at the end was outstanding. So we did learn quite a bit, as Jason said, both financially and about our facilities. And there's a lot of different things that we went to. I know that Richard and I went to a meeting on Wednesday night that talked about board relationships, and I thought that was very well done. The school, we've been, we've had a small committee together. We're talking about branding our school, and maybe looking at some ideas of how we could brand this school, and show a different design. I think Colleen had brought that up earlier, too, but we'll talk a little bit about that as we get further into the process, and talk about what that means, and actually give us a brand for our school, like a lot of companies, a lot of school districts do. I attended a PDS meeting, the professional development meeting in Mankato with seven other school districts. We had a Bush grant that helped support some of our initiatives here, including Avid, that was terrific. They offer a lot of great research for us, and a lot of support for some of those programs. We had a long meeting the other day about teacher evaluation. The state came up with new parameters for teacher evaluation, and Colleen Cardnoodle, again, is leading that charge, and along with our teaching staff, to help work through this teacher evaluation process. We're making some headway. We've got another meeting coming up, and hopefully we'll have a final product for you to see soon. But it does revamp the way we are evaluating teachers, and it had some pretty good ideas in there, too. I was at a legislative meeting last Sunday, or Saturday, I'm sorry, last Saturday, in the morning. We had a breakfast meeting with about eight legislators, and we talked about everything you can imagine, from finance to bowling, to the facilities piece. And we had superintendents, including me, that presented some different pieces. One of the things that did get discussed was that facility piece, where you said, schools in the state don't have that option. That's not quite true, because there are a handful of school districts that actually do have an option. There are school districts, the larger school districts, get $2.80, give or take, I can't remember the exact numbers, $2.80 a square foot for some of their facility planning. And that compares, on average, on the other school districts that don't get that aid, about 58 cents per square foot. And you think of all the square footage we have in our area, that's a lot of dollars when you take that difference of $2, between what some of the larger schools get because of this law that was created for larger schools, that some of these outstate school districts do not get. So there's some inequity that we need to be addressing, and if there's one thing that you can present to your legislators, Senator Jensen and Representative Fritz, it's that inequity in facilities. Because there is a huge inequity between outstate school districts and the larger school districts that get that square footage cost. So we'd like to balance that piece out. And that will be addressed this legislative session, and that was part of the working group that Mr. Hildebrandt, our building and grounds person, was part of this last time. But that will be reviewed by the state legislators, actually, this session. It won't be in effect until 2015, but at least it will be reviewed by them. Other than that, it's been a busy January, February, as Kathy's kept me on the straight now, so I appreciate that. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Todd.
Actually, yes? Could Todd get those figures to us, the difference?
You bet.
Based on our square footage, if we're in Minneapolis, and comparable?
Yeah, we could do it at the dollar amount. I've got those somewhere. I don't have the actual ones. I suppose you could...
Because February 20th is a juncture.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Then we can talk about that. I know I'm going up, I think you are.
You are. Yep.
And Jerry, I think, signed up, so it's something we can talk to him about.
It's a good talking point for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Next item, then, dates to remember. On February 3rd, at 3:30 PM, will be the curriculum committee meeting at the district office. That was today. It was. This didn't get changed from the last meeting. It was a great meeting as well.
It's just a test.
February 5th, 3:30 PM, will be the wellness committee meeting in the district office, which as far as I know, has not yet taken place. On February 10th, 5:30 PM, will be a work session at the district office. On February 12th, at 3:45 PM, will be the health insurance committee meeting in the district office. And on February 18th, at 7:30 AM, will be the finance meeting in the district office. February 24th, at 6:30 PM, will be the board meeting, and it's legislation we're still determining that. It'll be right back here at the middle school. The, I'll re-mention, but I don't have it in front of me. Can somebody remind me what date we decided on for the retreat?
February 12.
February 12th, at 5:30, will be the board retreat, school board retreat, assuming at the district office. Okay, with that, we will adjourn the, I always forget what the term is, recess the open meeting?
Be recessed.
We'll recess the open...